...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, open up this April 15 evening, Commissioners meeting, we have all three Commissioners and County Attorney President. First only, gentlemen, Parkview EMS update.
Okay, last Friday, there was a little select group from one Commissioner, which was me, Ron Ditman, County Councilmember, Gail, and Ritter Services, put it that way. We met with Parkview Hospital, Hospital Parkview Health on ambulance service, whether they were then interested in ambulance service in Fulton County. They are, they are very interested, they would like to partner up with us, so I think it'd be a good fit. They already got helicopter out here, it's in Tiger Woodlawn Hospital. So, I guess, short and sweet, so we need to, if you guys are okay with it, we need to give Ritter, very Ritter permission to start contract negotiations with him. They didn't think it would be a long drawn out, they were gonna try to make it quick, two, three weeks, see if they couldn't get a contract hammered down between that and our attorneys, so basically, that's where we're at, unless you guys got any more questions.
I'm good with it. Okay. You want to motion?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I'll make the motion that we give very permission to go ahead and start negotiations with Parkview. Do you have any public comment on that?
Anybody?
They don't have to do an RFP or anything.
Okay, hearing none, all figure, motion carries three out. Okay, Rick, thank you. This time, I'll open up the public hearing for our alley vacation, and if there are any gentlemen who want to, is there anything, anything new you want to add?
Well, is there all, the two are here, but I don't think you have anything?
Is anybody here to speak on this alley vacation? Four or yes?
That's, that's over down me.
Yeah, okay, you state your name, and go ahead and stand up.
Michaeline Ardezo, I've owned that property for quite a while, and I don't agree with wanting to vacate alley, because I was told that if vacated, I would get the back part of the lot, and he would get the front part, and they said that we'd have to move the storage films that's built there.
Have to move what?
The storage films we have. Because I was told before that I owned up to his property, to his trailer, by the ones I bought it from, and then he had it surveyed, and nobody notified me anything about what's going on over here. I learned from Robert what was going on, I wouldn't even notify.
You never got notified?
No. I get the tax bill for my property.
You should have got notified, I would have thought.
Okay, so you're, I apologize, you're Michaeline, is that?
Yeah, I go from that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so we typically have these, any vacation like that, the alley or road would split right in the middle, so each landowner would receive half of the alley, or in this case, the alley, so, because it's a shed.
What happened to your building, split the front, looks like it's that right though?
Well, it looks like there's two sheds, right, there's one on...
I got two on my side, he's got one on his side.
I was gonna say, it looks like there's a shed on each side.
Yeah.
So, you're saying your shed sits on more than half the alley?
Between his shed and my shed is 10 inches, so where his property line is, my shed's okay, his shed, where his property line was, he had it surveyed, for his shed, half of his door is on my side.
But it wouldn't be if you vacated the alley, and you split the alley, it would be on, there'd be a little bit on him, right? Is that what you're saying?
Well, right now, if he's on my property, according to where he had it surveyed.
If the alley was vacated?
Yeah. So, I would prefer leave it like it is, because I got a lot of health issues and stuff going on, and I really, like I said, I know the ambulance school now, and stuff, if we could work something out, that would be great, just leave it there like it is.
Do you have copies of all the landowners that you've notified and have signature showing it?
I just got this paperwork, I didn't, I just, I talked to her and I talked to him, and I didn't have nothing signed during the thing.
Do they typically sign, sign college records?
Right, right.
I gave her, I thought I gave her a copy of this stuff.
No, I said you talked to him, but you never got nothing either. He don't live with me right now anyway.
But I think, I think this process to move forward, Hallie, am I correct, that the landowner has to give each landowner a piece of paper stating what they're trying to do, and get a signature the day they receive it?
Right.
Right? Whether it's post, whether it's in the mail, and they receive it, or the signature.
Right.
So, what do we do here, and we'll have to post, we'll have to...
Yes, and then we'll have to, then we'll have to have another meeting, and if whoever, if somebody doesn't care about it, then they don't have to appear. If she is the one that's opposed to it, then she'll need to either object or come to the meeting.
Okay, so are we starting from square one again, because she did, he does have a signature from that landlord?
Correct.
Okay.
Could you not take her presence in the meeting as accepting that as notification?
Is everybody here that is connected to them?
She's the only landowner listed that it affects.
Yeah, because, assuming you're Mark?
Yep.
Okay, so he owns the two properties?
Okay, so she is the only one, there isn't anyone else, than me and Robert. Okay, so yes, we can.
Okay, all right, so then...
And she's objecting to it, is that correct?
Okay. So, for us to do anything, we need to push for table list until our next, I'm assuming evening meeting, so you guys can be here to, probably work something out.
Yeah, I'm disabled, I can't work.
Yeah, so...
So, there's really two alleyways there, right?
Yeah.
One of my property, between mine and Robert's?
Yeah, yes.
And then, one that runs the length of my property through their property?
Yes.
And I heard Joe, Joe said there was one back behind too, they said there's three alleys, they only thought there was only this.
There's north and south, east and west, across their intersection, you got two and one. And you're wanting, well, you're wanting to vacate two alleys?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it says the 11-foot, so they're vacating this alleyway, north and south, one in the east and west. So, that's...
If her shed is on that, she's gonna have to move something, is that what she's saying?
But you will have to move yours, but he'll have to move his.
He'll have to move his.
Do you agree with that, that your shed is on her, would be over your half of the alley?
No, no. She must be disagreeing with what the surveyor said was my property.
Well, well, your property, like, it's kind of your own state, not my, not my, uh...
No, there's, the alley is from my state towards your place.
Yeah.
So, the alley is where your shed is sitting.
Okay. Okay, well, at this point, I guess we can call it.
Put that down the middle, yes.
We need to table this till our next meeting.
Right.
Are you okay?
For clarification.
Are you okay with the next June?
Yeah, just let me know what day and time.
It's the third, the third Monday in June, 6:00 PM. You guys okay? Meeting okay?
So, the one question I have, is the alleyway that separates my two properties?
Hold on, hold on. If you're, hold on, hold on, if you got it.
And this is how I run this, by the road, before this little shed is. He said this is, I was told, right, when I called the office, that I would get the property that you ride it, he would get the front end of the road, and I would get the back shed, but I hope that's what it is.
It goes down this way, so, down, yeah.
And so, this is you?
No, this is...
So, you get this.
It's technically, this way or the other.
So, we might have that, but no, so I told him, that we didn't make a mistake. Thanks, don't create an idea, it goes down the middle.
Yeah, it goes east and west. Just so if it goes down the middle, then that would put your shed, where your property, his shed back here?
Is that...
It's 10 inches between them.
I got two sheds on my, and one, where his shed is? Yeah. The shed is actually on the side. The shed's over here, it's yours. Yeah, this one is too.
Okay.
When the, we don't know what the survey looks like, so, when he says there's stakes out there, is it on her property? The stakes on his property, on one side of the lot. So, your shed is safe? Yeah, I still don't understand why. Okay, but your shed is safe, correct, that you know it's not this way? Yeah. It's this way.
Does that, does that, does that change anything, that since you know which, which the property line?
No, I still, like I said, I lived here all these years, where I got sick and moved and divorced, I didn't know that, they didn't even talk about it, and I didn't get one of those. No, it's said today, okay.
There, yeah, my shed is not on her property. The alley, my shed is on my property.
And her shed is on her property? I was, I didn't know how they divide, my first time, I was...
Looks like both sheds are...
Yeah.
And mine is about this far.
Because they told me when I called, trying to find out like this, after you notified me, somehow, who I talked to, they told me the alley, it would do, you would get this part up that way, I would get this part that way. I'm, who I talked to, and I...
Split it down the, down the middle.
Does that change anything, knowing which way it would be split after you? You're okay?
Still against it?
I'm still against it.
I'm against it.
Yeah.
Well, let's give it a mark, because, okay, and you, you can think about it, that way you...
See if you guys can push it out, or whatever.
Okay, yeah.
Talk to everyone around here.
I'm moving, so if one of them...
Yeah, he's moving, and Mark wanted to buy his property, and so, me and Mark...
Okay, you're fine.
Okay, work it out.
Just to make sure you understand, so, yeah, we'll bring this back next month, if evening meeting, and, okay, Mark, so, do you want to say something?
So, if I have an alleyway that splits my two properties, is there a way for me to vacate that alley in my section? Because I know there's one between Robert and mine, and then there's another one there.
Yeah, that 12-foot alley? Yeah, and that's vacation. So, if, if this vacates, then your property, then your property line would, you, well, when this vacates, you, this will be your property. This two open alleyway here, then one, Robert, you have, and you can have.
Yeah, so this is one, and I know there's this alley here.
Yep.
For some reason, they don't want to vacate this, it might be, might be vacant.
You mean here on down?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know what's going on.
This is a real right here, right? So, it is the all their property?
I guess my question would be, if I think, if we can cut this alleyway, but I'm not sure, I know you can't access it anywhere physical, but I'm not sure, yeah, move by something, it's so, I'm not sure, I just want to know.
And you live one block from my living room, sorry.
Let me clarify on that here. She has, she has...
Do you have, so, are we table on that, so?
The one month.
On third Monday?
The third Monday, even May.
And June?
Yeah, June.
May or June?
May.
May, can I take the may?
And I get, okay.
I take the may. All right, I'll try to wish for that. All right. Okay. So, we will move to...
Okay.
The North Central Indiana Regional Planning, we have the contract that Stephen Ray presented last meeting, we want to table that, I, I would like to table this, one more meeting, I do not have, but there's updated contract with the reduction of that, so I think we'll table that, yeah, we'll do that.
Sure, make sure we got the money.
Well, it's one of ducks in a row, that way we're...
I agree with you.
Okay, then I have the resolution for the, um, North Central Indiana Regional on their five-year comprehensive economic development strategy. Okay, you guys have a chance to look it up, correct?
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, we got, didn't understand, right?
Yeah.
This is resolution 04152024. Okay. So, I have resolution 04152024 to the Fulton County Commissioners approving the 2024 five-year comprehensive economic development strategy, whereas US Economic Development Administration, EDA, requires a submission of a comprehensive economic development strategy to maintain eligibility for an EDA grant and loan program, whereas the counties of North Central Indiana, Cass, Clinton, Fulton Howard, Miami, and Tipton have engaged in a collaborative public planning process to update the region's CEDS, whereas the North Central Indiana Regional Planning Council Committee has received, reviewed the 2024 CEDS and find that it reflects the development needs of North Central Indiana, whereas the 2024 SEDs of North Central Indiana shall serve as a regional strategy for the six counties of North Central Indiana, with each county's concurrent, whereas the North Central Indiana Regional Planning Council Board of Directors approved the 2024 SEDs on January 9, 2024, and whereas the counties of North Central Indiana have engaged in, engaged in North Central Indiana Regional Planning to implement the SEDs and to provide other programs and services necessary for local and regional growth. Now, therefore, we have resolved that Commissioners want approval of 2024 SEDs to meet the eligibility requirements for the grant and loan program administered by the US Economic Development Administration, and number two, pledge continued support to the North, North Central Indiana Regional Planning.
Clear as mud?
Yep. Do you have any questions on that? Any questions? Okay, here we go, and I'm going to take the motion to approve resolution 041520.
So, move.
Second, all favor, motion carries three out. Three out.
It's not quick.
Okay, now I have four contracts here.
So, do you have a chance to look that one up?
Is that right?
They look fine a bit, like the other ones.
Okay, so we have a decorative contract for, yeah, four of them. I want to say, one's for Jerry Good, one's for, I assume, Gail.
John Good.
Well, it says Jerry, the car is Jerry's.
Oh, yeah.
We're talking, oh, we've got...
Margot.
Now, we have...
And Jerry don't need a contract.
I just saw where they want her, so, so we've got Margot, John, and Gail.
Yep.
Any questions on that?
No, don't believe so, I didn't, you did.
Gail, any comment or anything on, or nothing?
No.
Okay, all right, so, we're going to take the motion to approve three contracts for the corner for Gail Karas, Margot Lehman, and John Good.
Second.
Motion carries three out. Okay. Okay, we have a travel request, you guys had a chance to look those over?
Yep.
Questions, concerns?
No, other than the one travel request, I will abstain from.
Okay, we have a, okay, a travel request from Bible Records for Kerry Rynstead, I'm going to take a motion to approve that.
So moved.
All second, all favor, Kerry's two O, Rick abstain. Then we have one for courthouse security supervisor, Guido Wyatt, Health Department, Denise, and my health officer, can you take a motion to approve those travel requests?
Second.
All favor, motion carries three out. Sign is after also. Okay, department updates, highway. It's through, John, you're alongside him.
Trying to keep you on your note. First thing I have is a permit request. It's permit 2416, it's from Samuel Schwartz, he's asking permission to put a 10-inch, a four 10-inch conduit underneath the road at 6159 North Lake Shore Drive, Macy, down near the lake for electrical conduit. In total, the road in the right way, that'd be 35 feet. And if John Flex went down, and this one, everything's in order.
Okay. Okay, we're going to take a motion to approve permit 2416.
So, move.
Second.
Okay, we don't need to clue on us, any, help, questions, anybody? All there, carries three out.
So, of course, the guy's been patching holes, running brush cutter and changing culverts, we just got done changing a big one down at Ford this last week, so, update on community crossings and federal aid, federal aid project 031 South, right now, that's, Finn and Brown just got the paving contract for that, and I believe they're gonna start some kind of in May, so, yeah, looking at that there. 031 North, it was awarded that here a month ago, the RFP will be going out for that this week, it's written up, wait for them to release that, so...
That's a 29, 28, 29, maybe?
Yeah, it'll be five years out.
And you, are you still gonna hit, knock those bucks off, or whatever?
Plan, kind of, the measures for a program, or plan on putting in the sure scrape, knocking them off, checking.
Getting rough.
Yeah, we're gonna have to use more, I reckon, grab, and the one thing, the strip is getting rough out. It's not too bad this time of year, but you get late in the year, and winter, dark, dark, so, it's hard. Bridge, 23, there's not really a whole lot to report there, but Bridge 161, get the rightway issues resolved there, and then with the utility companies and the land of on the east side, so, I think we're gonna be okay on that, stay on schedule, just looking like. Community crossings, we've got it advertised, opened up bids on May 6 for that. And I want to talk to you about State Route 14, the road closure between State Route 17 and State Route 35 over at Winhamak. I had a meeting with Endot, A and B Paving, and Plaski County Highway, we met this last week. They're gonna be closing that, it'll start around May, the first of May, and for about the first 30 days, they're gonna have a hard closure, they're gonna close down a mile at a time, there's 20 culverts in there that they're wanting to change out, the A and B have changed them, and they plan to change each one within three days, but there's several.
So, you have a mile close for three days, and then they'll move on down, close another mile for three days?
Yeah, roughly.
Mm-hmm.
And in the meantime, then they're gonna do their deep milling and patching in there at that time, and then when they actually pave the road, it'll be one lane traffic with lighters, so there's gonna be about 30, probably 45-day time span in there where the road's gonna be closed off for the most part, and then their, their official detour is to run up north on 17, up to 10, and cross, and then back down to 35, so it looks quite wings out. So, Endot wanted us to come up with unofficial detour, and of course, we've worked with Plaski County on that, because, you know, whatever, we send them west on, they're gonna go into Plaski County on, and vice versa, so what we're thinking is, our 550 South, which is a Star City Blacktop, and it would be 550 South to Plaski County as well, we'd run them south, down to that, and then over, it's a good straight road, heavy road, it would take a lot of traffic, and then...
You'd be rounding 501 of them.
Yeah, down the state road, I guess, and, and we also, because you've got people, and they're gonna go to Winhamak and go north, they're not gonna want to go south, so go north, so we can send them up to 400 North, and straight across, and it's a pretty straight shot until you get them about a mile and a half of 35, and then the river makes them drop south a little bit, but, that's what Plaski, that's what I've come up with, it's, people are probably still gonna go up to the road close line, and then go around the square, and we're gonna document it.
And come back.
We're gonna document all of that, too, with Endot, yeah, major damage over 100. About the best we can do, so, I think I sent you maps of those. You guys can go off board with that, that's what we're trying to do, and try to cover it the best we can. Endot's also gonna close State Route 25, sort of, right after the 4th of July, down here at Mulberry, they're gonna close that bridge completely, and they done that a few years ago, so I sent you a copy of the road program for that, where I wanted to send them around like we did last time they closed it, down 9 Lake, 600 South, and up to 125 East, and back at 400 across. We paved that, since they have to last closure, so, we'll take all of it.
How thick did you put it?
Actually, pretty thick.
I thought you did.
It doesn't need chip seal, it's come, it needs to be chip sealed, we can do that before the 4th of July, so, that'd be done, and you can help preserve it even more. If I have your blessing on those two, we'll send an agreement with them.
Yeah, we're good.
While we had the meeting over Winhamak on the State Route 14 project, A and B A and B F about buying the millings off of them, they're looking for a home for them, there's gonna be approximately 20,000 tons of them, when we bought millings before off US 31, I think they were $3 a ton, they're asking $5 a ton.
Are they weighing, are they weighing that?
No, it'd be by the truckload, we figured, 20, 20 tons of it, it'd be a rough number.
Is that competitive work, with what you'd use if you did have the millings?
So, if I was to go out and buy, like, for shoulder, so, I'm just saying, if I used it for shoulders now, if I bought 73s, they're gonna be, let's see, 73s are 1625, and elevens are $20.95.
Your third and fourth, what would cost you if you didn't have lots of millings?
You're getting that truck to your shop, where you'd have to track that, A and B'd have to, you'd probably get 25... You'd probably get twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five dollars a ton. I think that is the level.
Is that the level?
Yeah, sixteen, sixteen and twenty, between sixteen and twenty dollars delivered. But still, we have
Five, thirty, sixteen, or twenty?
Yeah, three to four times as much.
You think you could use them all?
I mean, like before, we did use them all the first year, but twenty thousand's a big number, but.
Going down a little bit, you want?
Yeah, it'd be a close haul for them.
You're paid five bucks. It's enough savings compared to otherwise. It'd be nice if it was still three, but.
Yeah, but everything, everything's a lot cheaper then, too.
Yeah, I'd say. I'll be ready to collect some more, Steve, but.
Yeah.
Are you just doing a, some kind of agreement, or how does they need to do that? Are you good with that, or what do you?
Last time, we just, just totally take them.
There's no official reason to have a contract or advertise or do anything, so. That's the way you've been doing it, they've just given it to you.
I don't know if I need a motion to approve the purchase, so.
They still gotta turn in some kinds of bill, they turned it back a little bit, right?
I'd say do a motion that says you can.
Give you permission to motion to purchase millions off A and B for that project? Just file it.
So moved?
Sorry.
While we're talking about stone and chip seal, paving and all that, Steve Woods, Fairgrounds. He had me up, wanting to know about having highway to do some chip seal over there at the fairgrounds. Basically, from the main entrance, around the pony barns.
Yeah, yeah. Be on the parking lot side, so they're pulling into the main entrance, going to the horse and pony section. And I think Rick was on the crew that initially put that in. However, long ago that was. And it just
Just a year ago.
Couple of years ago. Curves around right up into the front of the clubhouse there. So we, I do wanna say I'll talk about it a little bit, but I definitely wanna thank the county highway for jumping in. We had some, not sizable holes, but we had some holes in that that they came out and did a little work to before the FFA auction, just as a safety precaution to get them taken care of. So I definitely appreciate John and the crew jumping in to get that taken care of on short notice.
I gave them a, a good estimate on what it costs to do it. Chip seal, and then you want to follow seal on.
Yes, we do wanna follow seal.
But you're just supplying the labor. Yeah, labor, they take care of it the way that Jerry also.
Well, pardon, a little extra, just because the student has. Buy donuts.
Yeah, that. Give them labor, yeah.
You gotta clear that with Jerry.
I bet I could get that.
No, probably.
Yeah, I
We did good, we need motion, anything?
We can
It's doing to be serious.
So, we'll entertain motion to approve the, John helping out the fairgrounds with their drive on the chip seal problem.
Second.
All there. Motion carries three.
Thank you. Last thing I had for you tonight. Getting ready to start mowing again, if you please, yeah. Looking at a part-time mower man, one of our mower men, Carishew, and he retired this last year, so he's looking at maybe repaying him with Mike Giffens. I'm all right with Mike. I think that's about everything I got.
Good.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Good.
Just a couple of things, we'll start with Natalie first. This week is telecommunications week, I sent you guys a message. Kristin Ryan will be making breakfast on Tuesday and Wednesday, and Sunday, Tuesday and Thursday. She's coming with us, appreciate it. I did talk to, this calls Trent as well. I did talk to Andy, and I talked to you last Friday about combining and making a public safety board. Instead of the multiple boards, like we discussed, and we need to do a couple of ordinances for that. And drop one ordinance, Holly, and I'll bring that to your attention. But with these multiples and negotiation, with all these meetings, I just, we're talking about the same thing at each one of these meetings, so.
Do you wanna call it a public safety board, is that what you said?
Yeah, our public safety commission, whatever you guys see fit, or we bring that to the table. I did contact a couple of counties about our local agreements. Trent did ask last week, and I'd like to sit down with Misty and Andy and Krista and I, and just go over those expectations, make sure we get that interlocal agreement to work on their, on your side, as what your requirements are, Trent, and what they would like to see in that interlocal agreement to move forward, and that shouldn't take long at all, so. Moving forward from that, and then the director's summit is next week, that is free training for Krista and I. I know I sent that a time or two ago, but that will be next week, we will obviously share a rhythm, share a ride. And that would be a two-day affair, but that training is free, except for the hotel cost, so. One thing, Megan Oberg has taken a quality assurance class, she has passed that. And she will be working with the new medical direction and to enhance her skills as well. And the both knew there, I think that will go quite well for her. And moving that part-time to full-time, I did meet with job classification committee. We will be presenting that tomorrow to council for approval. And Brandy did do a conditional offer of appointment for that with HR and myself, and the job classification committee is well aware of that, to move forward. So they'll be going on that tomorrow. Where Brady Stalbon. Moving on to EMA, we assisted Columbia School during the eclipse. Rochester schools were in session, I know other departments went to other schools. We did have a great time doing that, and the volunteers, they were very thankful. And then continued to do a safety school plan with Downey-Caston School, so those are very, very productive. I will be working with Amy and the pastors, it's getting close for us to meet. We did have more people come to the table after that meeting, and to write that warming and cooling shelter. It needs to be for all, and not significant, but the plan for these homeless folks or people without a home and so forth, are in which it's planned, so. That will be moving forward. I sent you, maybe what was last week, the SHSP grant, or maybe two weeks ago. That is up and coming. One of the things, and I'd advise listed on cybersecurity, I think any kind of money we can get for cybersecurity and so forth with that, if we need to move forward. We can have up to two people apply for that SHSP grant, so. And other public safety departments, so.
So, Larry, like you and Travis?
Travis may want to do something, I don't, I don't know, but we tried, and we, we had very good stuff last year, and we were denied, but I really think we need to try for cybersecurity, because it's a hundred fifty thousand if you're awarded. Up to a hundred fifty thousand, it's something that a constant, yeah, worry, and I did compliment him on that, and that will, that comes fast and so forth, but other than that, I think I'm, I'm good.
Thank you, Gail.
Thanks, you're welcome.
Okay. Chuck, have you ever hit for treasure?
I guess you did, I thought you had a beach to give us.
Yeah, I just was like.
Travis, sure.
Yeah.
Like usual, I don't have a holdup. He mailed the reports out. Okay, remember now. Any questions on any of those? Seventy-two inmates this morning, we invoiced for roughly fifty-four thousand dollars last month for out-of-county and federal inmates. Right now, I was thinking fifteen for Wallbush County and eight federal. Jay Salientest graduates from the academy this Friday, so I have him back and ready to rock and roll, he's already completed all his ET and everything, so. It'll be, and be a couple of us as soon as we get in there, so. Still, we did do our stellar changeover, our phone service changeover last week in the jail, that went pretty smooth. Part of what they've got is called broadcasting TV, but you've got out here, but you can put informational stuff out in the lobby, so we can push that out to the cell block, so we can have our inmate rules and everything go out to the cell blocks. And then we'd have different informational stuff at the booking area for somebody getting processed in, and different, rather lofty for the public, so, but fantastic feature. All of the public notices that we have to tape up and everything, we don't have to do that anymore, we can just push right out to that TV, and so, I'm pretty excited.
Great.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Okay. Just Michael Flicker.
We'll start with stellar. I went, I just literally got, why are you laughing, right? I literally just got back from Akron, have their signatures, I'll get full signatures tomorrow night, so everybody's, all the community's gonna be involved in this thing. We're still working on, we've got to the end of the month to get everything in, and it's about two weeks from today at this point. So it's just moving along, no new kills other than that for the moment. The other thing I'll talk about real quick is I toured the Potts building along with the mayor and a number of others. Anybody who wants to venture, go. We went from the basement to the top. There's a lot more of that building than you think. I don't know, we're waiting on an engineer's report on what to deal with and how, how the next steps are. I don't know if the mayor has any more about that right now, but that's, for it, for me, it's been just regular meeting on the stellar stuff, so.
Do you have an updated contract, Victor?
Oh, no, I better get that for you. I've been busy on the other day.
Yeah, I know, you know.
And I'll be honest, it's a slip of mine.
You're fine.
No, I'm out of the office all day tomorrow, in an all-day meeting, but I'll get it to you on Wednesday. Of course, we gotta talk about it. Glad you think.
Nothing on Ready? Nothing on Ready? Okay.
Okay, no, I'll give them to you. You didn't read Saturday's paper?
Yes, I did. Good. I'll hear it officially.
Well, we got thirty-five million dollars.
Okay.
Okay, out of a request of eighty.
Our district requested eighty?
Yes, and here's what happened. The state told us to request seventy, up to seventy-five million. We kinda figured that, following what happened on Ready One, that some of the other districts would not get full funding, which, that did prove true. So we asked the state, and they gave us the okay to go ahead and ask for about five million dollars more, for, 'cause we had quite a number of programs that we wanted to talk about, or were going. To me, it's a disappointment that you get less than half what the state tells you to apply for. So what that amounts to at this point is, we have what they call above-the-line projects. And those were the ones that we put into the application, and now what we have to do is go back to another meeting and figure out who loses what projects, and come into the thirty-five. What we do is we look at the project, how much it costs, once we get to thirty-five, that's about where we go. I feel very, very comfortable with Janice's project out at the school, the daycare center. The state liked that and actually elevated that at our presentation, so I'm sure about that. I don't know where the industrial park stands, we've get something, I'm, I'm pretty sure of that. I just don't know how much we'll get for it, 'cause we've gotta do some studies before we do anything else.
What was the highest amount, the highest region got it during?
We got thirty-five, and four other groups got forty-five. If you go to every corner of the state and Indianapolis, they got the forty-fives. The rest of them, some of them, like Switzerland County or whatnot, they got ten million.
Just one county got ten million?
No, well, one district.
District, okay, okay.
'Cause every dis, it's planning group, regional district, yeah. So it's just a question of what they are, I guess, I've, I've got a map of all the stuff that, it'll show you, but we were in the second tier the same way that we were last year, but the difference this time is, last time you had Apache Drive. This time, we got more money, and maybe we'll get more money offered it that way. And we have two good projects, in my opinion, so actually, we did better than the first time out. And that's been complimented to us, at least we're on the road to do something new and everything, at this point, so, yeah, that's.
Thank you.
You're welcome. There's still Lily money out there, we're still gonna try.
I know you're working hard, you did, you know.
I'm ready for vacation. As soon as stellar's over, I'm taking it.
Steve, fair enough.
So I wanted to come to commissioners today.
It sounds bothering you, Stephen, you can move one way or another, but.
Oh, is it my legs? I'm sorry.
Oh, gosh, okay.
So I wanted to just give you guys an update on some of our ARP projects that we are working on. I do apologize, we've, we've been kinda negligent in following up with Christina every month, but we haven't spent anything since January, so. But what we have been able to accomplish so far, of course, almost, just about everybody in the room here has been to the fairgrounds at some point in time. Hopefully, you're out there this past Saturday, you'll fish ride to support the four H.
But you weren't there.
I was there for five minutes, and you can ask Jerry why I was not there. Yeah, I understand. So one thing that was high on our priority list, since those buildings are used quite often by the public, is we needed to start working towards replacing and updating some of our tables and chairs. So we did that back in March of last year, we purchased through Sam Club some lifetime, heavier-duty form tables, and then upgraded some chairs, we were able to get that done. Then, actually, January of last year, the extension office, for as long as I know of, I've been on board for eight, nine years. Carpet in there has, has been treacherous, and so we were able to replace that and get that updated, and made, all the ladies in my office were very happy, so. We went ahead in January as well, we had Theory Construction come and put some new steel on the pavilion that's right next to the mortar wall, right by the entrance of the fairgrounds. We've got Craig's Welding to make us some new chair racks for the new chairs, and we, chair racks have been there twenty-five, thirty years, probably, so we needed to update that. We put in a couple of new gates down by the amplifier entrance on the south end of the fairgrounds. That was accomplished in June of last year, or in May, in June of last year, we replaced the air conditioning unit, one air conditioning unit, and the Smith Building by Franger Gas, and then we, at Nelson's And then we, at Nelson's Plumbing, come a couple of times throughout the month of June, and they finally got the project completed. We put a new water shut-off. It used to be inside the Quonset hut, and you had to move a couple of boards and be able to climb down and get down there to shut valves off for winterization. And so we continued to have leak issues in there and then through some of the other pipes. So in order to avoid another fourteen-hundred-dollar water bill in a month, we decided that we would go ahead and replace that water shut-off. It is outside of the building, so it's easier access and it's all upgraded. So last project that we, we completed in January of this year was we purchased two new water fountains that will go inside the Smith, the community building. And they'll be standard drinking fountains plus the water valve fill option. So those are going to be completed here within the next month. Couple of projects that we have, we have committed. If you were at the Fish Friday this weekend, you would have seen Rochester Glass had just put in two brand-new set of doors. That came in a couple thousand under what we were estimating, which is awesome. But we're going to turn around and have the front doors taken off, fixed, repainted, so that all the doors are about the same matching color. So at our level.
Do you got total on what you spent on that other stuff?
Yes, up until, we, I just, about four hours ago, got the Rochester glass being, so that one's not been paid. But our current balance, our current spending balance so far, we have spent thirty-two thousand, five twenty-five, sixty-five cents. We have available one seventeen, four seventy-four, and thirty-five cents. And then after the Rochester glass, we'll have one oh nine, three ninety, and thirty-five cents.
Good, thank you.
So we have two projects that we have committed to doing. One was our bleacher project. We estimated that cost is going to be two-hundred-and-sixty thousand. We were able to, after we finally had some, someone that was willing to do it, come look over the project and evaluate it, we, we set aside sixty-five thousand to complete that project. So that is supposed to start beginning of May, so it will be completed by the time the fair starts. So we'll actually be taking all three bleacher, bleacher sections and pushing them to the west about ten feet, pouring concrete walls. Because the current issue is that the wood walls that were the original ones, we put in the sixties, of course, are collapsing. So they've been getting worse over the last couple of years, and so we're able to do that. So at the time, at the same time, we're going to push everything back and make our insurance company happy as well, because when the dirt comes, they'll cringe. Well, not the people sitting on the front row, but the insurance company cringes. So we've committed sixty-five for that, and then we've committed about twenty-eight thousand for speaker projects, because we need to upgrade throughout the fairgrounds, all of the communication. So we're going to do it in segments. First major one that we're going to push to accomplish is the livestock barn area, so that everyone coming and watching the shows, everyone that is prepping their animals and working to get in line, they can be able to hear. And then, of course, when, if, when a swarm comes through, we can get them to evacuate faster than running around covering them. So that's our main one, what we're going to work on, depending on what our quotes are coming in at. We are working with Sweetwater, and they're going to send a contractor, insulation contractor, to come down to make sure that it's all done right the first time. So we're going to get that one done, then we're going to work on the amplifier and then put all three sections, or those two sections combined with the main fairgrounds, so that everything's going to be good. That's our plan right now. I do want everyone to put on your schedule, July sixth to the thirteenth, that's the county fair. We're going to start off on Saturday with autocross. Last year was the first time. Everybody had a great time at that, so we are expanding. And we're going to start with that, and then we're going to end with a demo there. So everything in between is just general fair, but. That's all I got for you. If you have any questions, on your way.
Thank you, James.
Okay, thanks, you guys. Appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
Dave, will you be able to help with anything?
So I was gonna give an update real quick, that we did meet with the Bevan Home Board on Saturday. And a lot of discussion was had regarding a concept called mobile advocacy. We will have another meeting on Friday, and so they will want to use Fulton County as a case study to see if they can get this concept moving. I guess they did this in Iowa. It moves away from the need to put people in shelters all the time and really provide them resources where they're at. Obviously, if you're taking people out of their homes, they don't have jobs, the kids are not in school, and so it's more disruptive. And so they're looking at other ways, and because we are struggling to get individuals to, cause against County, to the Bevan Home, we would be the perfect test opportunity, and so I don't know what that tail is quite yet. We just got to the first part of it. I'm going to finish reading what she gave me, so I'm prepared for Friday, but I don't know what that looks like from a perspective of the, you know, layouts or the finance needed or what the details would be, but I'll just keep everybody informed to see if there's any opportunity for some of what you were talking about with the specific money to be put towards that. So I think there's lots of details in my mind that would need to be worked out, but it's a step in the right direction. And the, it appears that the director, as well as most of the board members, are willing to research this opportunity. There's been lots of studies done. It's been successful other places. We just have not done it here in this region yet.
Good.
Pretty, pretty interesting.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then we'll be meeting on the twenty-third of April at eleven o'clock at Combined Community Services to research their independent, the project independence and see what that specific project looks like related to helping coming alongside individuals and needing to give them a hand up and not a hand out. It's that more case manager study that I was talking about last time I presented. So that date is April twenty-third at eleven, if you are interested in attending.
Twenty-third at eleven?
Yep, April twenty-third. And it's at Combined Community Services. It's their food bank, so they host this program at the food bank there, so.
Trent, anything from Mayor Ruggel?
Uh, just to add a little bit of what Mike said. We are trying to really begin to restore rehab at the Puts Building. They kind of walked away from it and wanted to hand it over to us. We don't really want it. I did make contact with the contractor out of Manchester that had given us a proposal or given them a proposal. So we had a number we were looking at, and, and my conversation with them last week, they had never seen any type of structural engineering work on the thing. They just came over and met with Al and came up with a number on Al, so this is what we need, so here's the number. So that didn't work for us. So I did find out Friday there were actually engineering work done in twenty-two that they had never seen. Don't even know why it was done. They hadn't seen it. I did have another one come in from Indianapolis, look at it Friday. They just sent me an assessment this afternoon or late this evening. I haven't got a call on my phone. I have a call tomorrow to find out more about what they found, what they think would suggest to do. But I think the way it looks, rehab's going to be the cheaper way, actually, than it would be to do anything else with it. I know Monica, I talked with her quite a bit with her attorney Friday, and she wants to remain in there, wants the rehab done, so we got to work out that. But I'm hopeful that we can restore it.
Is she in there now?
She's in there now, but she's going to have to move out pretty quick because she can't, they can't be there while the work is being done, obviously. So, but my plan is to work with her to be able to get her back in there. That's what she wants. So the other thing, you mentioned the industrial park part of the Ready Two. We were proactive in this with Commonwealth in March, hustling around to try and put a project, very similar to the project we submitted for Ready Two. And they helped us get a application in by April first. It's a federal grant that they had a little more faith in than they did in Ready Two, and it's a good thing. So we do have another alternative to keep moving forward on that project. And we did make contact with some other landowners that are interested in opting, much-needed ground out there to, to keep going forward with it. So we just got to work out some details, but that's basically all we've got right now that involves a Commonwealth, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Grant. Okay. You guys had a chance to look the minutes over for the April first meeting, corrections?
Yep. I didn't see anything.
Yep. Can I have your team guys approve the April first minutes?
So moved.
Second. All fair. You guys had a chance to look over the financials, claims, transfers, appropriations? Any questions, concerns?
I didn't see anything.
Is Al still? I'll step out. Okay, I have April fifteenth miscellaneous claims of three hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety cents. I have utilities, nine thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and thirty cents. We have a lint distribution, seven hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and eight cents. We have the wheel, certex distribution of seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-two cents. We have payroll for four, five, twenty-four, two hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-two cents. Payroll deduction of a hundred thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents. Insurance docket for the dispers, dispersments for four, four, to four, one, twenty-four, twenty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents. We have insurance docket for April's fees of fifty-two thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. We have the dispersments for three twenty-eight to four, three, of eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. Insurance docket for dispersments of three twenty-one, three twenty-seven, twenty-four, five thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-nine cents. Transfer probation, five thousand dollars from school removal to landscaping. We have a highway department transfer, forty thousand dollars for building repair to consult fee. All of those funds cannot be used for building repairs as funded, and therefore would be better suited for the self-keeping. The appropriation request. Three hundred highway. It's appropriation to cover the schooling fee for Randy Moore's CDL and replace CDL funds for drug screening and verbal compliance. Forty, four thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. The highway department bridge number fifty, not anticipated to be spent for the bridge number fifty, federal aid project was underestimated, but appropriation to cover future current cost, sixteen thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. The highway to bridge one sixty-one, twenty-nine thousand dollars, not anticipated to be spent for the bridge, the system on February, project was underestimated, and appropriation to cover future project cost. Paul, business here, can I have a business? It's just, any other one I can help?
Uh, yes, it's in, uh, type A now, we have a little bit in the lobby for the days. Is that given? Posted?
Sounds good. Paul, business hall?
Yep.
Christine? Paul, business? Okay, new business?
No.
Dave?
No.
Christine? New business, sorry? Okay, I'm down to public comment. Anybody have public comment?
I do have a public comment.
Please stand and state your name for the record.
Absolutely. I'd like to each and every one of you to give you a copy of this, too.
Give it to Eric, if you don't mind.
Okay. This is a civil suit that's been filed against Yale, the director of nine-one-one. It's a lawsuit for defamation of character and slandering my name. I attempted to be respectful to Miss Yale. She wanted to put false statements out there about me that were untrue. A few weeks ago, there was a rumor that went around that I supposedly said that Menthol EMS was shutting down. I never once said that at all. I, I was on Menthol EMS for almost, close to two years. And long story too short, I had a meeting approved by my chief and my assistant chief, the director of EMS for Menthol. And that meeting was with, he's right under the governor of Indiana, Dr. Eric Hazel. And this meeting, I went to my bosses and said, hey, can I, can I set this up? You know, I think we got a potential here for some good things to happen, whether it be, you know, training, funding, or whatever it may be. I'm no longer, I no longer work for the EMS.
Hey, I'm gonna stop you, okay? Since this is a lawsuit and you are stating facts that would be brought up in a lawsuit, we are not going to try the case here in public forum. It needs to be done in court, which you have filed, and you have requested a jury demand.
Absolutely.
And so it is Fulton County's job now to answer your complaint and then go from there.
Okay.
So.
But it is also, it is also the citizens here who are, you know, the sheriff, these workers here, they have the right to know. It's all public knowledge.
They will have the right to know in the lawsuit. If you want to continue and make all of these statements, I guess I cannot stop you. I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah, no, no. Are you the attorney for the county, I'm assuming, or?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, pleasure to meet you. But anyways, as, as I've continued on, the, the big issue at hand is that these statements were made against me. I had Deputy Derek Alterman was with me today. He had a conversation, and some things that were brought up. One was saying, one was that she said she was going to go to the prosecutor, and she had me on recording and all this other craziness. Well, guess what? I was still on the EMS service, and I had permission from my assistant chief-in-chief that I could respond to those calls. I had permission, okay? But I had to wait till the EMS truck got there. My last day in my resignation was four eleven of twenty twenty-four, okay? I have no vendetta against the sheriff, vendetta against, I didn't even know her personally at all, like, other than talking to her maybe once or twice on the phone. I'm not here to, I, 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 I am a firm believer in being a productive member of the community. You know, I try to be involved down there at the sheriff's department, you know, bringing donuts down there, donating money to other, you know, organizations and stuff, and I'm about that. But I'm also not going to let, sit back and allow somebody And I'm about that. But I'm also not gonna let, sit back and allow somebody to slander my name and my attorneys will not either. Um, you know, this is a matter for, um, that just needs to be dealt with. And not only is this matter a urgent issue, this is an urgent issue because it's not just one or two people who are having this issue out of this individual, okay? There's other county leadership without saying names, okay, that are having issues with this individual, okay? She's, there's other situations, I could go in, in depth, um, of all the different situations. But where she messed up is when she said that she was gonna try to go to the prosecutor and do something. She's not law enforcement. There's, there is judicial process. Uh, law enforcement has to file charges and so on and so forth. She cannot go to the prosecutor. But either way, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment on anything? Okay, hearing in, I'll, I can wish you success.
So who?
Second. All fair.